Oh good. Yes, loud and clear, super, super, super. So let me switch cameras for a second. So you can see me, hello, hi. It's really light outside, um, so I'm not gonna be on this camera for long. Um. And I don't have the best, the best view behind me. So I just wanted to, to um connect just for a second so you can see me. Uh and say hi, thanks for being here. Um, I've got some really great examples to show you and hopefully we're gonna be about an hour. Um, ho- yeah. It's, it's my goal to not go too much farther over an hour, so. We'll see how much we can get done in, in that time. Okay, so I'm gonna switch back. And I can see the questions or comments when I turn my head and look at my computer. So that's not all the time, so um, hopefully I will catch your questions if you have any. Uh while, while I am recording or while I'm streaming. So first of all, I want to show you some examples. Uh because the best way to learn is from, is learning from others. And I love to deconstruct how, how cards are made. Because it gives me ideas of how I can put some together for myself. So this first one is from Jane and let me see if I can, yeah, scoot it. Scoot it forward a little bit here, so we can see it. This one is from Jane and. Interesting things that, that stand out right away are of course the four pieces here. These stand out and they're all in the same theme. Another interesting thing that stands out is this piece of washi tape and it's been torn, so it's kind of jagged, which is neat. It's not an exact straight line. I see some rubber stamping. In black ink. I see some postage stamps. Is there one? I don't think I see one here on, on this one, but there's, there's three here. And then I see for the background papers. I see map and I see text and I see some sheet music. So, I like this idea of putting pieces of map on the side. Something in the middle for the background, for the, for the base layer. And then drawing in my lines so that I can see exactly where. I want to put in um my elements to make each individual A T C stand out. Okay, this one, this is from Kathy and um. Here's how she did the back, which is also interesting. Just a sheet of something and then stamped on each one. Kathy did a background, looks like a piece of book page, which is kind of in that neutral color. And these flowers. Some pieces of stamp that's got numbers on them, some small stamps. These uh Denison labels with images on them. And the coolest thing about this or what really stands out to me is a bit of stenciling with this white. Right in the middle and a little bit on the sides. I really like that, I think that's so unique and I wanna try something like that. I know I've got some stencils and I've got um acrylic paint, so I'm gonna try to do something similar. This one is from Beth, Beth Nguyen. These are interesting, I like these little vegetable uh illustrations, these are really cool. And um. Yep, it's, it's obviously the theme that runs through. This is some kind of stencil, not stencil, it's like a decal, it's like a sticker, but it could easily be a rubber stamp. Um and then I think it's just a piece of pattern paper that starts on the very bottom. And then we've got some postage stamps, some more kind of Denison label style here with numbers. Which is uh really cool. Now let me check so far to see if there's any questions. No, we're good so far, so far so good. Uh this one is another one, oh, this is what I, this is neat. This is again from Kathy, she's got these um Denison labels on the back with um. Uh a stamp handmade and the date and, and her name, really nice. This one doesn't really have the lines too delineated, they're very, very muted. This red and then there's no line here at all in the middle. Just this cigar band which kind of serves as the border, very clever. The, the main things that, that show up for me in this one are these um. These stamps that are done with birds and flower. And in the very, very back on almost one of the first layers, there is a receipt. Way on the bottom, it's like one of, there's, there's pattern paper and then there's a receipt on top of that. And then on, on top, there's all these little pieces. So the colors in general, just with the pink. And the reds and then the little bits of green and blues that pop out, it's just very effective, very, very pretty. This is another one from Jane. We've got our mushrooms, toadstools and. What's um, what stands out for me for this one is this stenciling done with this lime green ink. Um because it's so subtle, so soft and yet it just kind of pulls the whole thing together, kind of cohesively. And this has got, you know, very, the lines you can see pretty clearly, they're not heavy. They're light lines, but you can see them very clearly and it just helps you. See that we've got four quadrants um for four A T Cs. This one is from, oh, this is also from Jane, I've got a whole bunch in here from Jane. Again, we've got our four quadrants, this one is interesting to me because it's got napkin, paper napkin. Um and it's just, there's just a bunch of layers. I, I don't know what's on the very, very bottom layer, but I see some either rubber stamping or stenciling on the very base. And then napkin on top. A little bit of shading with the ink around the edges to just to kind of pull your eye towards the center. And then we've got some really pretty illustrations with the birds. This one is from Polly, Polly Ford Johnson. Um, I like this one because it's got washi tape on two sides. All the way down. And there's also washi tape that's torn. And just by chance, I have the same washi tape, this is a Tim Holtz washi tape. So you take it, you take a piece and then you just tear it right down the middle and then you can just. Use pieces of it rather than a solid, um, a solid piece. So the main four illustrations are very much visible. Also balanced with these main four postage stamps from the same series. This one is very simple, it's a simple. A concept in regards to the number of pages or papers that are being used, it's not that much. You know, if you're starting with, with four and four and you've got these already set aside. Then creating the background, um, it's just a piece of um, pattern paper, washi tape. Drawing in your lines and then the small bits of washi tape here as well. So, so effective, so pretty and not very complicated. So um, hopefully, these are a lot of really good ideas for you to. To be inspired for putting together some of your own. I know that as I look through these, they give me lots of ideas for putting, for putting stuff together. Um, the swap is open until August fifteenth. That's when I will begin to uh lay things out and start to exchange things. I will probably wait a couple of days just in case there are some uh late arrivals. Before I start uh mailing stuff out to people. Uh my other, my other things to remember uh that I wanted to mention was. Try and keep things flat, um, no bumpy embellishments. Someone asked if they could do some sewing around the outside, um, which is totally fine because that's, that's pretty much flat. But gluing something like buttons or anything that's bumpy is, is not going to be good. None of these have a varnish over the top. Um, I had some arrive already that had been coated with Mod Podge and they were. Put together like this and unfortunately, they stuck together when I was trying to remove, trying to um. Separate them and one of them got destroyed, so if you do use a varnish over the top. Just um, you can dust it with a little bit of cornstarch or get a um. Wax candle and just rub it over the top. And that'll take away the tackiness so that they don't stick together. Um, you can also put a piece of paper in between or wax paper if, if they are still sticky or. You know, you just wanna be extra careful, but none of these have a varnish over the top and so you can see that. They are not um sticking to anything. Alright, let me check again to see if there's any questions. Okay, so. Are these meant to be actually cut or are they meant to be, are they meant to stay together? I say it's entirely up to you. Um, there have been times when I've cut them down and there have been times when I keep them just like this. It's entirely your own personal preference, if you have a lot of A T Cs. Then go ahead and, and, and you like the, the size and, and you wanna add these to your collection, then definitely. You know, cut, cut these down. Um, it's just, it just gives you options for, you know, what you wanna do. You can keep them just like this and set them somewhere on your desk or hang them on a wall or whatever. If they are cut separately, some will not be edged. Hmm, what does that mean by edged? Alright, so let me show you what I'm going to do with mine, I have not made any of mine yet. I've, I've only been showing what others have been doing, um, and but I'm going to create some of my own. So I'll put these out of the way. So I cut out my cereal boxes. I've got a whole bunch. And um, some thickness is. You know, there, there's a difference in thickness between boxes, but it, it doesn't matter. Uh especially because I'm gonna be adding a lot of layers on top, so it's gonna get thicker no matter what. If you have already sent yours in for the exchange, um, another idea for these is. In the collage art collective, there is that circle with exchanging, um, exchanging art. You can definitely, there's a huge list of, of names and addresses of people who are interested in, in exchanging art. You can, you know, send, send them, them out and. In the example, the, 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 the original example that I had showed you. You can send this through the mail just like this, put a, put a postage stamp on it. Name, address, write your little note and it's good to go. It doesn't need to be in an envelope, which is really cool. A single, a single forever postage stamp will do if you're in the United States. Alright, so my ideas, I have got. A bunch of things. I started thinking about. What the, the fourth, you know, the theme of what I wanted to put on. And I've got a few, I've got these stickers and I. I don't use stickers very often, but what's nice about these is that they're in a set. So um, it would look really pretty to, to use four of these on, you know, on some cards. These little guys are a little bit smaller, I don't know quite yet if I could make these work. But I definitely think that I could make these work. I also have these, these stickers of these funny characters. This is not something my typical style to, to use these little, little images, but. They're just so cute. I might, I might try something with those. I got these from this, this um website vintage dash ornaments dot com. They also make, or they also sell these. These guys and they sell them in sheets. They're already pre-cut and they're, but attached just with a little, you know, a little bit of paper. And you just um, cut them out the rest of the way and you can use them in projects. So these are really, really cool and this vintage dash ornaments dot com. Website, they sell a lot of these different um Victorian um images. So I might use some of those. I've got a bunch of postage stamps, these are really interesting. So I might use, I've got some purples and some pinks, these are cool. I also have a bunch of these Norwegian stamps. These are also cool because they're, they're black and brown, which is kind of an interesting combination. So that's some more options, so anyway, lots of good stuff. Let's get going. So I have my matte medium and a paintbrush. For putting papers onto these. Because I'm going to glue on this side and it's a little, it's. It, I think it would take glue stick just fine, but I wanna use the brush with matte medium and then that way I can just. You know, put papers right on the top or whatever. Alright, so my first one. The first one is inspired by this napkin, I got the napkin idea from Jane. So I have this. Strange napkin, actually I've got a whole bunch of them. It is. A map of Moscow. Um, where, where did, you know, where does this come from, um? It, I bought these at the Goodwill, a whole stack of napkins and the Goodwill is our uh charity shop here in the U S. Chain of charity shops and it, there was just some museum, I guess, that, that created a bunch of, of. Serving napkins for, with different uh famous cities like Paris or uh whatever, New York. And this one, this one just happened to be Moscow, um, so I was like, oh, this is very interesting, I like the red and, and the map, so. So I will use this, I think just a portion. Since it's Russian, I have these series of Russian stamps. Um, they're kind of Olympic, I think, from the nineteen eighties and then I've got some Russian text. So these are gonna be my first ones and since if I take this apart. It would show right through and that's not what we want, of course. So I have wallpaper that I cut out down to size and I'm using this wallpaper as. The background. So that if it, it doesn't even show through anyway, but it's just a neutral color. So that's what I wanna do first. Okay, so let's take some of this matte medium. And some brush. And just get this down first. It's been so long since I've used this, it's all. Gunked up in there. There we go. Let me put something underneath just in case. So I always do half and then I'll do the other half. A little more. Take this off. Press it down. There we go. Okay. There we go. Alright, so. I've got some poetry here and here's what I, here's why I asked for a ruler, this is like my favorite trick. To use a sharp or a very thin ruler, sturdy and then just tear it like this. I'm also going to experiment. With just tearing it by hand and kind of having that jagged edge. I don't know what's gonna look better. So I'll just do it two ways and see. What looks better. Now, choosing orientation, I'm gonna do portrait or landscape. The main thing are my stamps, my postage stamps, what do I just do with those? My Russian postage stamps. Hmm, I've already lost them on the mess on my desk, can you believe it? Here they are. So, these won't look quite so good if I do it in the landscape. So it's gonna be better in the portrait. Setting like this. And plus I've got these long pieces, so it is, does look better if I do it this way. Oh shoot, I cut a little bit off too much at the bottom, oh, that's okay, I'll make it work. Alright, so the map, I'm also gonna just kind of tear it in chunks. On the left and on the right and then either I will put it, put this down the middle. Well, that looks good. Something like that. Do I need to tear it or do I just glue it on and then put this over the top? Well, let's tear it and see what happens. I've got more of these if I make a mistake or if I do something that I don't like. And I wonder if I should put this down, no, I'm not, I'm just gonna do it like this. Now what looks better, if I put it on the outside or put, put it like, which one, the map on the top or on the bottom? Or one of each? Like this, something like that. That looks good. And cause I've got the neutral background, um, the wallpaper behind, it doesn't matter that this is short, as a matter of fact. Think I will tear this off just a little bit. There. Now it probably won't matter if I, which layer I do, because I'm gonna. Use my matte medium and it's gonna just um soak it right down to the bottom, okay, so. Let me cut off some more of this just in case I wanna use another piece somewhere else later on. Set it aside. Okay. Got my brush here. And I probably could use glue stick um to put this one down. But since I have this matte medium taken out, I'm just gonna use it. I don't very often take out and use my matte medium, so here's my opportunity to just use it up. Now I'm just eyeballing it, I could have already measured. Um, and written or created the. The lines with a pencil and a ruler, but I'm just kinda. Just kinda winging it. And again, I really should have something underneath because I don't wanna make a mess on my desk. It's okay if there's a little bit of wrinkles or bubbling, cause it's gonna dry flat. Oh, nice, and I can see a little bit of the wallpaper, the white lines coming through at the bottom, so I do like that. Now if you do something. And you hate it. You could always keep it for yourself and use it as a learning experience. Um, and I do that very often. Because you, you just create something and it's just not the way you wanted it to look. And I can already see that um I'm not balanced, I've got two, uh, more on one side than the other. So that right now could potentially be a problem. Um, but there's always ways to fix things. And um, if I'm not happy at, happy with it, I can just keep it for myself. Alright, so let's cut this off. And while this dries, I will start on the second one. Okay. So I will, this is what it looks like at the moment, not very attractive, I admit. But I will move this over and let it dry. And in the meantime. I will show you my second one that I'm gonna put together. It also requires a brush and paints. I have. This sheet of stamp um catalog. And my idea was. To put it on here. And I have these stickers. I don't know, I don't know which ones I will use yet. Those are kind of pretty. Right? So. In between, I'm going to put an, a, a different layer and. The reason why is because. These, this stamp page is very busy, very, very busy and. There is the worry that if you put more things on top of a busy piece of paper, it's going to really. It's just gonna be a whole lot to look at and um it's gonna be kind of crazy. So. What I wanna do is I have this stencil and. If I lay it over the top. And use a little bit of white paint. Um, it should have, should create a really nice layer. And just be enough contrast so that when I put these stamps down. It will, or not these stamps, these stickers down, it will be, it will really kind of blend together nicely. So this is another experiment. Right? So I've got my paper already cut down five by seven. I want it centered, so I will fold the paper to where I want it. And then fold it back the other way. Is that right? Yep, that's right. Okay. And now. I can get. My background. And paint on, again more matte medium. Gonna put a lot on this one. So I can load it up. There we go. Oops, take off the extra. And then put down my paper. There we go. Let me close this. Just get a little bit more for the edges here. Okay. Now I wonder if, if I can tear this off with my ruler again. This way. Nope, that one doesn't work. So I'll just use scissors. Okay, there we go. I can still see a little bit of the underneath of the. Cardboard, but it's not gonna show once I'm done with all my layers. Now, to draw in lines if you want to. Um. Width is five inches, so half of that is two and a half. So I would just. Mark a spot and then. Do the same thing a little bit farther down. There we go. Um, the other way. This is seven inches, so that's. Three. And a half. There we go. Now I know where the center is. So if I put down my stencil. Where did it go? Here it is. It's gonna go right over the top. Now I have a stippling brush, looks like this. And I have some white ink. If this is just acrylic paint. And I will put it. On a scrap piece of paper. I want it super dry, I don't want wet, wet paint on here. So I just kinda spread it out. And now. Go like this. Now I don't know if the white is gonna have enough contrast, but we'll just try and see. Need a little bit more. So I'm doing a whole lot of mixed media here today, I don't usually do this. But I really got inspired by seeing that stencil, stenciling done by Kathy. And I thought, oh, I need to try that too. So here we go. Okay, so let me lift it up from one corner and see. Okay, it looks very good. This dried very, very lightly here, so I'm gonna just go back and put in a second layer. Just to make it a little bit more. Make the white stand out a little bit more. There. That looks nice, I like it. Now, I have my stamps or my stickers, I will do something like this. Soon as that dries. And in the meantime, I do wanna add some more. Color to this. And I have, I was looking through my, looking through my inks. To see what would be a good fit. And I found this teal color and I also found this lilac and the lilac really stands out nicely. Um, so that's what I think I wanna use along the edges or on the outside. So I'm gonna use this to stamp. And I have. These. These stamps. Clear stamps. Just some doodles. And I thought to do a little bit of the doodling on the top and on the bottom. Okay, so that's what I'm gonna do. So what other questions do you have about the exchange? I see some people saying. Um, where can I find out more about the, the exchange? So I, there's a couple of resources on my website, margaritemiller.com, there is a blog post. That I wrote, that has all the details. And then. In addition to that, I made a YouTube video. So just go to my, my um. Uh, channel here on YouTube and it's one of my, the latest, probably the latest video that there is. Um, in addition to that, there is more information in the collage art collective. And you do need to sign up. The cost is seven dollars and you do that on the collage art collective. There is a signup. And if you sign up on, if you're using a computer, a desktop computer. Um, there's no problem. There is a little bit of a problem in the respect that people use, a lot of people use their Apple. Apple phones and Apple iPads to access the collage art collective and. Unfortunately, Apple does not allow me to do in-app purchases. Um, and so it's, does not allow you to sign up through Apple. Very, it's, it's just a mess, it's, I have to figure out the administrative thing. How to fix that? So in that case, if you don't, if you don't, if you can't access it. Through signup through the collage art collective. Um, I have a PayPal address and you can send. Uh, the payment that way and then you are all set. If you need the address, the address is in the collage art collective. And um, that's. The only other thing that you need to remember when you send these in is to. Uh, send your return address, make sure that it's very legible, either on the envelope that you sent it on. Or if you have one of those pre-sticky um return address labels. Um, put one inside your envelope so that I um have it when I mail back. Your cards. So far we have over a hundred people who are participating in this exchange, so there's quite. A huge variety of art that's coming in. Which is really cool. And it's going, you're gonna, you're gonna get some really nice pieces. I can guarantee you that. So here is what I have, let me zoom in a little bit. I like it, look how pretty that is. So now like the background has already started to. To, to, to become muted because you've got these things in the foreground. The rubber stamping and the stenciling. Now when I add my pieces. There is um, they stand out a little bit more. Like that. I think this one does not really work because it's a different shape. But is there anything else I want to add? I do definitely want to make these lines darker. And I think I might add some more rubber stamping. But in black. Okay. What do you think? Now for rubber stamps, I have. This one. What else? I could also add postage stamps. I have got. These ones I had mentioned, I also have these ones from India. They're kind of jewel toned. So let's see, I could do greens and blues maybe. Like this. Purple. Too bad I don't have more pink, but well, that's okay. I can just do blues. How does that look? Something like that. That's cool. And then at the very top, just do a little bit of rubber stamping maybe? Okay, I think that's good. So what goes down first? Now, I think I will use the glue stick because. I do want to have. Um, precision. Not just slap stuff down. So let's just do this. And I like it, I like everything where I've got it placed. So I'm gonna carefully just move around my pieces. Oh, maybe. Maybe switch the colors. See, now I'm looking for balance. I've got one here, so I'm putting this one over here. This with this or this. Um. Yeah, that looks good. These stickers, I don't remember where I got those stickers from, actually. Um, I think I got them online or they came as a free. Purge or free gift with, with purchase or something like that. I didn't, I didn't order them because it's not my usual. Uh, style to have cactus stickers. But um, they're really beautiful, the colors are really beautiful. Okay. Okay, this one. Alright, here, let me put one of these down. I'm curious to see how thick these stickers are, hopefully. Hopefully they'll lie really, really flat. Oh boy. Oh, here we go. Okay. There we go. That looks nice. I love that white stencil, that's the best. I'm gonna do that again. On something else. So this one was a little bit underneath. Hmm, yeah, that's good, maybe like that. And then I'm gonna glue my other postage stamp on top. The sticker is a little bit shiny, but hopefully it's not gonna be a problem. Oops. Okay. There you go. So the placement again, just kind of, yeah, this is already down. Okay, this one I will put, glue it here. That's the nice thing about glue stick is that you can just kind of pull and push things around. Okay, now. Let's put this sticker down. Come on. Okay, and then the last one will go like this. Or should I put it over here? Yeah, I think I'll rotate it just a little bit. Okay, so now. Okay. This one came together pretty quickly. I have to say. Pretty easy, pretty quickly. Right, so do I want the rubber stamping on there? I think I do. I think I do. How much? Uh, I don't know, I still feel like it's missing something. Hmm. Washi tape. So here's the, here's the, the, the time where if you're, if you're not sure about something, the best thing to do is to stop. Set it aside. And come back to it. That way, you give yourself a little bit of a breather and it'll help you decide if you wanna keep it the way it is or keep on adding. So in the meantime, I will go back to my other one. This one, cuz it needs a lot of help. It needs a lot of help. I might throw it out and start from the beginning because I don't really like it or, or I have another idea. I can just layer on top again. More text. Let me see if I have more. Well, I've got this. But I did like kind of the jagged edges, so let me do that. You can always fix something if you think that you've ruined it. Rarely is there a time where it's a complete loss. At least that's my experience anyway. See, yeah, that does look so much better like that. Okay. And I know you still have your doubts. You're thinking, I don't know, Marguerite, this does not look so good, but I will just play with it until I can make it work. Um, I have a very tiny desk, so let me put away some of this stuff because it's going to get stuck or lost or whatever. So where is my little bag for the Indian stamps? I lost it. Oh, here it is. No, that's not it. Hmm. Well, let me just move them away anyway. There we go. Okay. I think I will go back to, well, let's try glue stick. I've got glue stick right here, so let's just do it. Okay. How are we doing on time? Oh my gosh, it's already almost one hour. Okay. So we just finished this one and then that will be that. Let's see, I'm up for the challenge to see if I can make this one work. If not, it shall remain mine forever. Okay. So this one I will draw lines on now. Just because I want to know where they are. So two and a half. And two and a half. And then this way. Or no, wait, this way. Oh, I got confused again. Seven, so that is three and a half. Three and a half by three and a half. Okay. Okay. There we go. Now, what to do with this? Hmm. Oh, okay. Russian stamps. These are big. I've got silver and gold. Cuz I think again, it's got the whole nineteen eighty Olympic theme here. Touristy type thing. Okay. Something like that. And then in addition, it needs something else. What else could I add? I could do, I could do more stenciling with this one. Um, I could do rubber stamping. I wonder if I should do more stenciling. I really, really, really like that stenciling. Maybe I'm just gonna do it. Might as well cuz I've got it all in front of me. Let me look on my computer to see if there's any questions. Is it only for the US people? No, this is an international, um, art exchange. So anywhere in the world where you happen to be, um, you are welcome to participate. So keep these flat as possible. Yes, um, I understand that you put layers above the top. That's totally fine. But try and keep them, um, flat as much as you possibly can. Alright. Let's go back to paint. I hope this works. Hopefully my brush is not dried out too much. So I'm pulling some of the paint down because I don't want it to be too goopy. And if I, and I can do it as heavy or as thin or do it in a couple of layers. See, here's what it looks like underneath. This is super light, so I might make it a bit heavier. So I'm gonna use a little bit more paint on the brush. The bristles are kind of hard on this brush. They're not very soft. So I should say not hard, but firm. So that way you can put a little bit more pressure on them and they're not going to bend so easily. Now I'm gonna go, I'm going back with a second layer here just to make it, um, pretty heavy. But I don't want it wet. Well, it's wet when it goes down, but, um, I just don't want it to, to pool underneath the stencil. So that's why it's better to do it in a couple of layers thinly rather than put a lot on at one time. Because if it pulls underneath the stencil, then your image will be ruined. Now I could have put down the postage stamps and then did the stenciling over the top. That's another option. But, um, I wanted to have the stamps really stand out and the stenciling is kind of in the background. So that's why I chose to do it this way. Now let me see if this is enough. Kind of light on the top, just right here. I need a tad, tad bit more, just right here. Okay. There we go. Yay! It dries really fast because it's a very thin layer of paint. Now I'm gonna, I don't want them exactly centered. I don't want it, you know, right smack in the middle of my ATC. I kind of want them spread around, kind of off like this. So that's what I'm doing here. Just moving them around a bit. Okay, that's good. Now I'll glue these down in a minute, but what else? Again, I'm feeling like I need another layer of something over the top. Um, I could do washi tape. I could, for example, these are, these are all I have on my desk. I'd have to go get something else cuz these are not the right colors, but I could do something on the top and on the bottom. And that's why I haven't glued these down yet because if I do wanna put something on the bottom, I'll need to move this up slightly or move this down slightly. So here's, here's where I'm still planning before I glue things down. Uh, another option is to take a rubber stamping and again, I don't have a whole lot of rubber stamps on my desk. I collage in, I, I have a standing desk in a different part of my house and that's where I have all my supplies and here to record, I just brought a few things on my desk, so I don't have that much and um, with me here. And this I don't think is, is the right theme, though it could be. I could make it work. What else? I could do, well, between rubber stamps and stenciling, that's pretty much my options and washi tape. So I think this is another one where I have to stop here and I have to think about it. Okay, so this is what I've come up with. Let me get some of this junk out of the way so you can see it better. These are my two, two ATC cards. I have another ATC card that I was gonna make, but I've run out of time. But I'll quickly tell you what I was going to do. I was going to use this as a background. Jane sent me this page. Very interesting. Jane Haddon. And I like it because it's so busy. Um, but plain also at the same time, kind of neutral. So I'm gonna do something like this. And then I have this tear sheet with bugs and plants. And I'll just show you like this, how I do it. Just take something like this. This one I will draw the lines clearly. So you'll see it clearly and then I will kind of decorate like this. And I'm not sure if I will use some of the plants or some of the bugs, just, you know, kind of like that. And that'll be kind of an theme. And then on top of that, I'll do some rubber stamping and that will be this one. So these are my three ideas. Alright, so does anybody have any questions, any other questions? I think I'm gonna pretty much wrap it up here. I need, do need to think about this, so I'm not gonna glue the, glue these down yet because I think I wanna put something on the top and on the bottom at least. Um, this one is probably done. I think this one's done. I think, I don't know if there's anything else. So you know what I could do on this is, um, ink with some black ink all the way around, so it creates kind of a border. Or a frame. That might be good. And I would do it in a solid, a nice solid color, black ink around. Okay, but let me check my computer.
Um, thanks. Oh, awesome. Thank you, Jane. Yay. Um, dried flowers or copies okay to send? Absolutely, absolutely. Your, your embellishments, um, if they need to be copied of flowers, absolutely, that, that will work just fine.
Oh, okay. Beth says that those, those, the veggie ATC that she sent, those are um, tissue paper, stamped tissue paper. So again, that's a really good idea. If you don't have napkins to use, you can use tissue paper that goes like, you know, when you, when you wrap a present or you stuff a, a bag with tissue paper. If you rubber stamp on the tissue paper, it comes out really, really neat. Let me show you. Here's an example, since I have this leftover napkin. I'll do one in black ink really quick so you can just see it. I really like this technique. This is a really nice idea to rubber stamp on tissue paper because then you can tear them out. And it's a super, super thin layer. And put it on something, and you can even um use it as as a method to to check your work. If you want to see, if you want to put a layer down or put down a rubber stamping, you can do that. So if I was, oh darn, I tore it. Oh, well, that's okay. If I was thinking, if I wanted to add something like this rubber stamping, I could actually do it with tissue paper. Or I could do it just with directly onto, onto the page, onto the substrate. Right? So it shows you. You know? That's what it would look like. So I could do it directly, or I could glue this on just like this. And that does look interesting, I do like that. I kind of even like that it's torn off at the edge and it's not completely all the way around. So I could do that, and also if this, these stickers are really slick and this ink would not go on here, it would just smear right off. You could use tissue paper and then your matte medium and just put it, glue it on like this. Um, that would work too. See how, how interesting that looks. So that's an option too. Alright. How do you decide which ATCs go where? So what I do is um, everything's labeled very nicely, and and again, don't forget to put your name on the back. Um, name, uh your, and where you're from, those are the two most important things. Date is okay too. You don't need to put your return address unless you want to. Some people put a little sticky with their their name and address and, you know, you can exchange more that way if you want. How do I decide who, what goes where? I just put a whole bunch out, I lay them out on my dining room table. And I keep them in stacks of, you know, you know, four from this person, four from this person, four from this person. And then I just pick them up and I will just set them, you know, I'll just just swap them, basically. Um, luckily, there's so many people who participate in these exchanges that there is really a wide um variety of 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 art that comes in. So that is, that's really awesome, that's really awesome.
Okay. Neat.
Love the idea, or love the look of the stenciling, I'm gonna try that. Yes, I'm glad that that um you're in, you like the stenciling, that's super cool. Alright. Okay, so I will finish these up and then I will post some pictures. I will probably put them um in the collective and probably post them on Instagram cuz that's where I like to post my photos as well, so you can look me up there, Marguerite Miller, if if you are on Instagram. And yep, thanks so much for being here and I really do hope that you participate, even if you if you don't send in four, if you just send in one, that's fine, send in one and you will get something in return that you like, I am sure of it. Okay, um so if you do have any other, any other questions, just send me an email. Or in in the comments, you can put a question and I will answer it that way. Okay, so have a good rest of your day and um hopefully I will see your cards in my mailbox very soon. Bye.